Recorded.
Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for August 21st, 2023. If you could all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can get a roll call?
Councilmember Strohman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hagan?
Here.
Mayor Bellinger?
Here.
All right, first up tonight, we have a presentation.
Okay.
You gotta wait.
So some of the Mothers Against Drug Driving statistics were that in 2017, 10,874 people died in a DUI-related collision, and also 300,000 people were injured in drunk driving collisions. Fifty to seventy-five percent of convicted drunk drivers continue to drive with a suspended driver's license from a previous DUI offense. In 2013, 28.7 million people have reportedly admitted to driving a motor vehicle while under the influence of alcohol. The Escalon, the City of Escalon only takes about five to 10 minutes, roughly about, to pass through on a normal day with normal speed of traffic and all that. In the City of Escalon, we take DUI offenses very seriously and exercise to full extent of the law when dealing with intoxicated drivers. DUIs have progressively gotten worse due to the use of marijuana and other illegal substances. Escalon Police takes it upon themselves to also assist in other programs such as every 15 minutes at Escalon High School to further people's, I guess, knowledge of drunk driving and what it can do to other people on the road. Although there may be many officers that have arrested people for drunk driving, there are two officers specifically that have taken it upon themselves to pretty much be out there and observe traffic under the influ, for drivers under the influence of alcohol. One of the officers that is high in the stats of arrest for DUI arrests was Lawrence Baldonado, who won't be here tonight for us. He's at home with his son sick. And the other officer was Nicholas Gek, who had 16 DUIs. In total, both of them had a total of 32 DUI arrests, and that's just in our small little city of Escalon. That's just people passing through coming from Stockton, Manteca, Oakdale, some of them from Escalon. Now, that doesn't include any of the assistance from other officers, but with Lawrence Baldonado and Nicholas Gek combined, there was a total of 39 assists and arrests related to DUIs. The Mothers Against Drug Driving also wanted to give the officers an award as well as a token of their gratitude, which I will now present to Officer Gek. All right, so this is pretty much an award saying that he has helped out the City of Escalon and awarded him with the Mothers Against Drug Driving for having 10 or more arrests in this city alone. So thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you to you and your fellow officers for all the work that you do in that regard. We appreciate every bit that you do. So, thank you. Next up is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Is there any item here at the council we'd like to pull? I'm gonna state right now that I will be abstaining from item number three on the vote.
I'd like to pull number one.
Okay, we're pulling number one. Anything else being pulled here? All right, anybody in the public that would like to pull an item for a discussion on consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for the balance.
I'll move to approve the minutes, the balance of the minutes, or the balance of the consent calendar for tonight's meeting.
I'd second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie 5-0. Back to item number one. Councilman Engel.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that it was quite a long meeting, and I get that there's a lot of information that can go into the minutes, but I felt that there was a deficit in the minutes for the last meeting. There was a lot of communication between the public and between the council, and I don't feel that main points were recorded in multiple areas, so I don't just have one to pull. In particular, I know that we have them recorded, so that can also be gone back and taken a look at. I would be, you know, willing to approve them as they're written with the understanding that moving forward, we can try and be a little bit more detailed in our minutes, especially in those meetings where there's a lot of conversation.
So I'm just gonna take this opportunity just to put it out there. A lot of cities utilize minutes for council action and council direction. Our city does apply more than that. I just wanna make sure that that is what this council's interested in doing, like, as a whole, so that we, because they've been pooled the last few times where we're trying to record action, direction, and then put in information that we, that we think should be going in there, but if there is, where if you're looking for more comprehensiveness to let us know, and maybe we could put it on a future agenda item to discuss a little bit more clearly, because the more we put on there, the longer it takes to get done, and we do have go-to meetings and audio as well as YouTube meetings to refer back to. So is there, I mean, I just wanna make sure that's okay that we're doing that, because we'll start becoming more comprehensive. So is this council fair to say more comprehensive than less comprehensive? Is that a better statement?
My thoughts, more comprehensive, but I brought it up to get the opinions of my fellow councilmen.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
My question would be, what exactly are you shooting for?
Well, just in here, going through the minutes, I noticed there were members of the audience as well as council members who made relevant statements or questions, and they weren't included up to yourself there. Mayor Protem, your council communications weren't even included.
Yeah.
So that's just one example. There were, there were several in each agenda item.
Guess what I mean? You wanting council, them to summarize each statement of every person that talks, you thinking? Or, like, I guess, when you're asking for comprehensive, what is that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. Notation or relevance to what the statement was can be pertinent to some of the items, so yes.
Any comments down here?
So, so more instead of less, yes.
I'm not looking for a dictation of every comment that's been made myself.
Acknowledgement of each speaker, is that appropriate?
I think that sounds fair enough, like, at least a summary of what they said.
If we're doing dictation, that agenda's gonna be 20 pages long.
Yeah.
Actually, with a two-and-a-half hour long meeting?
That's what I was getting at. I was trying to figure out how comprehensive is comprehensive, so to speak.
We'll go ahead and do that forward. Do you want us to put these on for the next meeting and rehash them, or do you wanna go ahead and approve these and then moving forward?
Seeing how, I did review some of the actual video. I think I'm satisfied that it was recorded that way, but I think we can start that with the next meeting.
Yes. Okay, sounds good.
All right. Then if we can get a motion for item number one?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's 5-0. All right, next up, staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have the Recreation Development Services, Public Works, Building Department, Water Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, reports for July. We do have both the Police Department report as well as the Treasures report are not included on this. They will be present on this agenda on the next meeting. So if you have any questions on any of these reports, please let me know.
Just one for Supervisor Collins. If you could just remind the public, we have a few more people here tonight, that I'm not sure I saw all these faces last time regarding Caltrans' plans coming up for us.
Yeah, no problem. I just spoke with, got another update again this morning from our vendor, or maybe it was on Friday, but we still are on track for September 3rd through 9th for some of the road work that's gonna be happening on the road. It's not gonna be a complete repave, but there will be quite a bit of the road itself being repaved and taken care of. They are aware that it's holiday weekend and tomato season in time, and they promised that that would not be affected during the construction.
Hold our fingers. Thank you.
Also, for Justin, for Public Works, how are we looking on the various little things I sent you as far as, you know, concerns for the public is, you know, like, the tagging that was on the slide and the ceiling and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, everything was noted this morning. Got taken care. Everything's been completed that you had requested.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions here for the staff?
I just, I just had one more.
Yeah, please.
For Sarge, how's our chief doing? Do you have any update on that?
He's doing good. He should be back by Monday.
Monday? Okay, that's good to hear.
He was trying to make it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the reports?
You don't have any?
Okay. Man, you're French. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dominique. A few items to report out today. Did want to notify the council. We continue to work on the smoke shop ordinance through our research and our preparation of the draft ordinance. We realized the best approach is to go through Title 17 zoning, and so that will need to go to the Planning Commission. Our thought is to get that before the Planning Commission at their next meeting on September 12th, and then bring back to the council at the next council meeting after that on September 18th. So we are making good progress on that, and that is kind of the next steps on the smoke shop ordinance. Couple things on economic development I did want to mention. I did have a conversation with David Hillier, Hillier Ford. There's been some activity around there, and I know some people had some questions about what was happening. Again, I did have a chance to talk to him. It sounds like it's gonna be a couple months, maybe more, for him to kind of close out his business operations. So he's there, he's doing things to close out his business, and then they will, after that, decide how they wanna handle the property, lease, sale. They'll make their determination after that. So I wanted to let the council and the public know. That was sort of the timeline that he's expecting at this point. But he has had a lot of interest in it. He fully recognizes the community's, you know, desire to see it in active use, but he has a few things to close out. As you have seen, the McDonald's, new McDonald's is under full construction. They expect 120-day construction window, so perhaps by the end of the year, you could see that business open. And then in terms of Orlando's market, they hope for a soft opening on Labor Day weekend. Couple other notes. As I start my tenure here, you know, first month or so, I am meeting with various businesses, various organizations, and I would love to start meeting with the public, any community members who have thoughts, concerns, questions on economic development or any other items. So my information is available on the city website. My name is Jalen French, the New Development Community Services Manager, and be happy to talk with any member of the public who has thoughts or questions. And then the last item is the housing element. We are in full swing of updating our six-cycle housing element. We do have a community survey on the city's website to get a feel for the public's thoughts on housing. That is up. We will send a printed copy through the next utility bill, and we will hold one or more community workshops here in the coming weeks and hope to have a draft out in the coming months. So that's a real brief timeline, but we'll be, we'll be out in front of the public here in the coming, in the coming weeks. And that's all for my reports.
Thank you.
Sergeant Zabrona, you have anything from Police Department?
Not that I was made aware of.
Okay.
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few updates for City Manager Report. So we do currently have that Commission on Aging position still out for application. It will be closing this Friday, August 25th, and so anybody who's interested, come to City Hall, pull an application, and we'll, we'll help you get that completed. As I've indicated at the past few meetings, we'll have a draft budget before council at the next meeting, which is the Tuesday, September 5th. Due to the holiday, we've rolled over the Monday meeting to the following Tuesday. We've talked about kind of breaking it up into a two-piece. That way, the council has a little bit more discussion and/or can take it in pieces, and so on the, the meeting of the 5th, we're gonna discuss budget related to general fund and all of the enterprise funds, and then all the remaining funds will come on the second half at the meeting of the 18th. That way, there's time to ask questions and get some follow-up and have thoroughness, you know, which, which felt like that was, that was needed at the time, and so we're trying to improve that process. And so we're gonna go ahead and do it that way unless there's any objections to that. Also, this week, we will be putting out the position of Finance Director slash Human Resources Director or Administrator, so that'll be advertised on our website and be put out for application as well as the position of Police Officer. So those are two positions that'll be posted up on the website and out for recruitment by the end of this week. And then at the last meeting, it was discussed, the council will direct the staff to contact the Escalon Parks Foundation and to receive an update, and so I did receive some information back from them. They currently have a little over $100,000 in funds that they have raised or in donations. They're currently working with Dreamland, which is the company that was gonna help them put the skate park together, and they're working on determining costs and whether they need a phasing schedule. And then as soon as they complete construction plans, they're gonna reach out to me as the city's representative and facilitate some type of presentation that we'll prepare for council at that time. And so that is the information, and if I hear anything else, I can continue to update on that. And then this last week, we had a two-plus-two school district meeting, which we needed to reschedule. We originally had scheduled it for this week, but we were also pending chief's return, which we do need him at that meeting to discuss a few items, and so we're going to go ahead and cancel the meeting for this month and just follow up with our next meeting in September, which is on the 14th. So that's our school two-plus-two meeting. And then a reminder for the next meeting, which is the September 5th meeting, we do have Blackwater attending that meeting to provide a wastewater treatment plant modernization presentation before the council. And we have asked them to go back to the original history. That way, the council and public have enough information to find out how we got here and where we're headed, and so that direction's been provided, and they're gonna go back and try to put all that information together to be able to present to the council.
Thank you. All right, now, next up is matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, except for brief responses. The council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it is required action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. Determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is at the discretion, discretionary decision made by the mayor. And keep in mind that for matters presented from the audience, it's for the council, not for the staff, so let's do that. And with that, let's open it up to the public. Supervisor Collins, if you can keep a timer on that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm ready.
Thank you.
So I just had a comment about last meeting, last council. There was a gentleman that came up on, and he used some buzzwords. He used senior housing and he used affordable housing. And after listening to his presentation, and I didn't get up because I was really tired, I think we all were, but I would really hope that you would not even consider lessening fees, because it's market value, and there's very, very few seniors I know that are, affordable housing is not market value. So I would just ask, if you wanna defer them, fine, but please don't lower fees for something that's market value, because that's not really gonna help our, a lot of our seniors. Might help a few, but it's not gonna help the vast majority that need this kind of housing. And then one other thing, sorry. As city council, you weren't the city council that changed the zoning on the gentleman that lives next to Orlando's. I understand that, but I am a little disappointed that as being representatives for citizens, that you wouldn't have seen that the city is the one that changed the zoning on that, and you should still probably have treated him as a resident. I don't think it's fair or right to require him to pay half of a fence, and as long as that business is there next to a residence, that business is responsible for that, in my point of view. And if sometime that they ever sell the property and then it becomes commercial, treat it as commercial. But please look out more for us as residents, please. Thank you.
1534, Debra Circle. Since we're kind of on the topic a little bit, starting to open it up with the DUI statistics, Saturday night, one of those statistics was in front of my house. My children were outside playing about 20 minutes prior to this person crashing into a parked vehicle right across the street from me, and that person was under the influence of alcohol or some substance. I'm not sure which. I bring this up simply for the fact that I've been here a handful of times requesting that the city put in speed bumps and a, possibly a stop sign right there at Debra Circle and Debra Court, and I still have not heard or seen any update as to the status of what's going on with that. And I'm just kind of curious as to what's going on with that. I know the speed trailer was out there, but still haven't seen or heard anything since.
Respond, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I feel then-
We can move it from that, but we can't respond, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I feel that those speed bumps are probably a necessity along with that stop sign, especially with this McDonald's going in. Everybody enjoys some nice fast food, especially after a night on the town drinking, and that's just gonna increase our flow of people who don't live there driving down that, that area, just simply for the fact that they wanna avoid stop signs, and those roads are so damn narrow. You know, the, the speed bumps are, I think, crucial, especially with the amount of kids that we have in that neighborhood and just having a DUI incident right there. So, thank you.
Danny Fox, I know you can't respond, but I do have a question procedurally, and maybe the city attorney can answer it for me. I'd like for you to think back on June 5th of this year, the meeting. In that, there was a motion. It was moved and seconded by Strohman and Walker. There was one absent and one nay. It was passed three to one to conduct a workshop on the city budget on June 19th, 2023, at 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM, put a stay on approving the budget by June 30th, 2023 deadline, approve the formal budget at the July 17th, 2023 regular city council meeting unless otherwise decided. Minute Order 2823. So there was no budget workshop. It was a presentation. Is it just the semantics that I'm getting incorrect? And how much authority does a minute order actually have, other than a majority or a quorum sending some kind of an order for policy and staff direction? Am I correct or am I not?
The question is, we're not allowed to talk, and the questions are asked. We'll have to look to get an answer possibly later, but we can't give an answer to that question.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's kind of important. Someone should know that if a, if a majority of the council votes for something and it doesn't, it doesn't come out as the minute order, then where does that stop? When a majority vote is read into the minutes and made it to be an order. But yeah, I'd like to, like to know the answer. Thank you.
Thanks. Any bells in the audience, or anybody on the go-to meeting that has any questions for council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, public hearing. Adopt Resolution Number XX23, approving the updated City of Escalon's Title VI program for E-Trans Unlimited English Proficiency Plan. Ms. John?
John.
Take it away, John.
Yes. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm John Ando, Council Manager, and today I'm here to request that the council hold a public hearing to review the E-Trans Title VI program. Every three years, we're required to update this Title VI program to evaluate the trans system in relation to ensuring that we're not discriminating on the basis of race, color, or natural origin in the programs and activities in relation to receiving federal funds. As part of the Title VI program, we have a notice that is included, that is posted on all the vehicles, a Limited English Proficiency Plan and a Public Involvement Program, a list of any investigations, lawsuits, or complaints, which there has been none, a location of all of our fixed route facilities, a table if we have any non-elected bodies advising the trans system, we have none, and then adoption of service standards and policies for the fixed route system. After the council adopts this program, it would be, we would do any necessary training with our operations contractor staff to ensure that they're complying with the program. We did advertise this public hearing in the newspaper and on the buses and on the website, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions here at the council level? All right, at this point, then, we should open up the public hearing. Any public comment? Is there anybody in the audience or online to go to meeting that would like to ask any questions of John here on this topic? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium here, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that and bring it back to council. Looking for action on this, then?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the adoption resolution, number XX23, approving the updated City of Escalon's Title IV program for E-Trans and Limited English Proficiency Plan.
You have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie's 5-0. So then, next up, thank you, John. Next up on our items is administrative matters, number seven. Receive update and consider recommendations on the city business license and home occupancy, application, review, and process procedures, and provide directions as necessary. Jalen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Jalen French. So at the June 19th city council meeting, staff did receive direction to review and see if there were ways to expedite the business license review and processing as well as the home occupation permit processing. So with that direction, staff over the last several weeks has undertaken a thorough review of our internal processes, but has also reviewed the approach and process for about 15 other cities, and those are listed in the staff report. Our goal was to see if there were inefficiencies, ways that we could expedite and streamline. I can share that we did found a few areas, and there are some recommendations in the staff report that we will get to. As was read, the item today is to kind of go over our initial recommendations and receive direction from the council. So it's kind of a two-step process here where we're not making firm recommendations to be adopted or not. We are introducing these to receive further direction from the council. We will go back based on the direction of the council, fine tune on, or go in a different direction if needed, and then come back with final recommendations. So a little background, the purpose of a business license is to regulate the transacting and carrying on, this is straight from the municipal code, of business in the city for the protection of public health, morals, safety, and general welfare. It is also a revenue generating proposition to not only offset staff's costs to review, but also to help support some of the services that we provide. The Escalon Municipal Code does not outline how we go about the process of review, how long it takes, anything like that. That is generally developed by staff with council and community input. So we have leeway in that vein. So staff's goal through this effort was to find the correct balance between regulating businesses to ensure they meet the kind of culture of the community, they fit in with the community, to protect public health and general welfare, but also to ensure that our process that we've created does not create any additional barriers to establishing, growing, or running a business in the city. So it is a balance. That's especially present in the home occupation permit side of it. So based on our internal assessment and external research, we do have, we have made the following recommendations. I will read those briefly. We do feel we could update and simplify our applications and forms to make it a little more user-friendly and actually reduce some of the review time on city staff's side. We can commit to a three-day review. We're about seven days right now. We could commit to a three-day review period. We would consider reducing the application fees and use tax based on our more streamlined review. We would eliminate the annual home occupation renewal process and just refer or differ, I should say, to the business license process. So a home occupation in itself would not need an annual renewal unless the business type changed or the location changed. And then we would reduce the number of departments to review the home occupation permits. That would be just planning to review to make sure community, neighborhood continuity and compatibility. So again, these are our recommendations based on our thorough review of our process and then review of 15 other jurisdictions process. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council or the public may have.
Questions here at the council level? Yeah. Before I ask the question, I do just want to say thank you. It's really exactly what I was asking for, and you guys did a great job reviewing other cities and meeting some of those other criteria to make things a little more user-friendly. On, on item four in, under discussion, it says, "In a subsequent phase of this effort, city staff is also recommending evaluating and making recommendations to the annual renewal process." Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yeah, it's really an administrative thing, but our, our business license annual review process is pretty cumbersome. It takes several weeks. It's a lot of printed documents, a lot of mailed out, a lot of folding. It's really an administrative process. As we kind of get through the bulk of this, we'd like to relook at the renewal process.
I think the rest of it looks great. Thank you very much. Dominique, thank you as well, and Diana as well. I'm sure she had a huge play in that.
Yes, group effort.
That's the only question I had. Any other questions up here?
I have a question.
Please.
So, Jalen, for the council's information and for the audience, I mean, I'm reading the paragraph on the permits for a home ox, but can you explain a little bit further as far as what the difference between, or what would trigger a home occupancy permit versus somebody that sells essential oils or somebody that sells Senti candles? And looking at this paragraph, it seems like that kind of thing is exempt from home ox. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are several exemptions from the home ox permit, and I can read those. So this is in the municipal code. Following types of businesses shall be considered exempt from the application fee, but they really should still get the permit. One-on-one lessons, art, dance, babysitting, independent direct sale associates, landlords or property owners, sales representatives, basic alteration sewing, simply handcraft making, simple handcraft, handy craft making, excuse me. So exempt from the application fee, but still really should get, you know, kind of go through the permit process. And you were mentioning, we do have our home occupation application. It really is just to ensure neighborhood compatibility. You can think of any number of business that someone could do out of their home that may not be compatible with a residential neighborhood. You know, a salon where you have two or three people coming, you know, hourly, some sort of card room. I've seen recycle centers, anything that would affect kind of people's enjoyment of their property, whether it's traffic issues, parking issues, noise, you know, just general activity around. You don't want to impinge upon, you know, the neighborhood's enjoyment of their property. That's why you have commercial zones versus residential zones, is to kind of keep those uses separate. And so that's the reason that cities sort of regulate home occupation permits, and they go through a review so the staff can look at it and say, yeah, I think this is incidental to the residential property, and I think it'll fit in with the community, the neighborhood.
I'm just throwing this out there to my fellow council members, but if the home ox is more so just as an awareness, as an awareness, could that, instead of charging an additional fee for the home ox, could that just piggyback along with the business license? That way the city knows, oh, there's a home ox with this instead of collecting an additional fee? Just throwing it out there to my fellow council members. If the goal is just so the city is aware that yes, this is a home occupation. What's, any thoughts on that, my fellow council members?
That kind of sounded like where they were going, right? If they go through that application process, it would be deemed by the city, whether that was like a regulated business. For example, we don't want somebody that's doing automotive repair, automotive painting, right? So once they completed the application, that would deem whether they did or did not have to pay that fee based on how the city deemed it. Is that correct? So, I mean, is that kind of makes it, makes it a moot point?
I'll answer it this way. It really is up to the direction of the council. Based on our research, five of the 15 cities that we researched don't have a separate home occupation sort of review or fee process. And it's a little gray there. All five cities look at home occupations as part of the business license process. There's not a separate permit that is pulled. One of the five cities charges a $25 sort of zoning check, and so that's their look for neighborhood compatibility. The other four communities of the five of the 15 simply do that check as part of the business license review. So there's really a wide spread of how cities handle this issue. Charge a fee, don't charge a fee, do it under the business license. So just of note to council member Strowman's question, we did look, and five of the 15 don't have sort of a separate permit outside of the business license.
And in the case that there is somebody, let's say somebody doesn't fill out the home ox and they're painting cars in their driveway, or they're doing something that doesn't meet the code, then the code enforcement would take that into account, correct?
Yes, that would be a less proactive and a more reactive way to handle it. But yes, I mean, cities always sort of have a second chance to correct issues that are not right.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the last city you worked at, what did you guys have a home ox? That's all I have.
And so the purpose of that is for a zoning check? Is that what we're saying, is the separate, a separate application is for an additional zoning check? Is that correct? And then I have a question on five. Reduce number of departments to review. How many departments? What departments currently review the home ox application?
Police Department, Public Works. Looking at Dominique. I think Finance.
Planning.
And Planning, of course. Yeah. So Finance, Planning, which would anyway, Police Department, and Public Works.
Okay. And then do current business licenses, just general business licenses, also go through those, all of those departments?
All of those departments.
So would this be in addition? It would be separate from that, I guess? So they wouldn't have to go through these at all? Or with the business license, they would, but then when they got the home ox, they don't have to additionally go through a second check? Is that how that works?
So there's, under our recommendation, there is the home occupation and the business license. So yes, someone whose home occupation has both, the home occupation and the business license initially, they would not have the renewal. So yes, they would go through the sort of, you know, one department and then go through the other departments. It wouldn't take longer. We would commit for all of it, a three-day review for the, all business license and home occupations.
Just for clarification, I mean, during that application process, again, those items would be reviewed, so we would be bypassing some of the departments that would need review, but if in the business description in the application, if it drew any red flags to staff, obviously we would send that over and have the department, the corresponding department look at it, right? So it's not like I'm filing for a home occupation business license, I can just put whatever I want and I just get away with it, right? There is still some review, and it's just deemed how it moves forward at that point once the application is submitted.
Correct.
Yeah, it seems pretty thorough. I appreciate you putting this together. It looks good to me, so.
Any other questions here? If not, we'll open it up to the folks here in the room or on the go-to meeting. If you have any questions for Mr. French here, anybody?
Just have a question. When I used to have a home business, when I would do park feet and have a vendor booth there, I was required to have a business license for that day. But then I was contacted every year by the city to renew that business license. So I guess my question is, in the kind of business I had, I didn't need to have a business license, as you said, but for that one day I needed one. What's the difference there and why? What's the purpose?
Through the mayor. So we did have a chance to sort of look into this, and I think what happened is as businesses came in and sold at, you know, a farmer's market or some event, there might have been a thought at the staff level that that was also a home occupation, a home occupation. And so then there was an inquiry as to whether this was a home occupation and, you know, an application went out. That's the best that we can determine probably happened. So that's, you know, really up for kind of this staff and the council to determine how we would handle that moving forward.
Thank you.
Jalen, can I please explain something?
Sure.
So I did some research on this earlier this year before Councilman Engel brought it up. And what is not common knowledge, but within our business license fees, the organization that is sponsoring an event can actually apply for a business license for the entire year. For example, Escalon Lions Club has vendors at Park Feet and Autumn Cruise and other events. Instead of you having to purchase a business license for the year, Escalon Lions Club can actually purchase a blanket business license that covers all of their events, similar to the Chamber. Chamber has their events. They can purchase an entire blanket business license for the entire year. That way you don't have to buy an individual license. So.
Sure.
I can comment on that. I understand what's being said, but I really think that that should be done through the city, especially when we're talking about any of those events that happen in town. For example, if somebody was selling home baked goods, I would want to make sure that they've gone through the appropriate safety measures and have the appropriate licensing to be producing and distributing food. And I don't know if any of those other organizations would go through that during that application process, so I would definitely like to see the city have control of that. But for an option for a one-day business permit for events, I think is a great addition.
And actually, Councilman Engel, I met with the San Joaquin County Department of Health, and they noted similarly, because right now the way their structure works is they want to charge an environmental health permit per event, and they noted that if the groups, nonprofit groups like the Lurk want to apply for an environmental health permit that covers a six-month period, they will work with us on that, instead of every single vendor having to get an individual environmental health permit.
Not to go, you know, back and forth, I'd rather see those fees come to Escalon. All right, no more comments from the public. So at this point, you're looking from this direction if we're looking to change anything or move forward as it's going. Is that correct?
Correct.
I just make sure that you check on the go-to.
Anybody on go-to that has any comments or questions for us? Nothing, so just looking for a consensus. Is that what we're doing here at this point of moving forward with what we currently have in place? Is that what we're looking to do? Just a consensus on this?
There's recommendations, staff recommendations at this point, and looking for any further council direction.
I'm good with what you've got going. I like the direction this is going myself.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Yeah, I like it going forward with that event-based business application as an option.
Like with all policy, if it's something that comes up, you know, it's evaluated. If we see that something's not working out right, or we notice there's something that needs to be additionally adjusted, if we think it's something that needs to come to council, we would bring it to you. Or if we feel like it's something pretty simple that we can adjust, we would go ahead and do that, just depending where that boundary is. And I'm confident Jalen will know what that is and make that move, so.
All right, so let's continue on with that then. So going on to item number eight, review council goals and CIP for 2324 budget. Continued, this is the seventh.
Here to pull that up here. Okay, so this item was actually continued from the last meeting. As you recall, when we did the- As you recall, when we did the budget presentation slash workshop, a number of items came up either from council members or members of the public, a lot of it pertaining to, you know, things being brought before council. It wasn't necessarily how the past practice has been done, and so as staff, we want to make sure our council and our community are comfortable with the things that we're doing and the directions that we're moving in, and so we put this item together to review council goals, as well as the capital improvement projects for 2324. So the goal, as written in our previous budgets with these council goals and manager goals, specifically the ones from last year, which were the ones that were recommended to be continued into the new fiscal year, these goals are at the heart of what our community expects from its local government, and in turn, these goals are woven throughout the fiscal year 2223 budget, which allocates the resources necessary to achieve shared visions. And so this was that, oh, sorry, the reasoning beyond that. So the question really is, is what is our goals? What is this council's goals? What are the community's goals? And so these were the goals that were in last year's budget that were continued over, and so the goals that were listed were to pursue senior housing development, that was actually a goal that was listed on the fiscal year 2122 budget as well, and was rolled over into the new year, because it's something that's still in process, right? We're still working with CCH and trying to pursue that senior housing development. We've talked about utilizing land and/or funds available through the city to make that happen, and that's still in its early stages moving forward. Continuing efforts for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, that's something that has made it to the top of the list in past councils and budgets, obviously because of the current status with our wastewater treatment plant and, you know, needing that modernization, having to move forward because of those notice violations and cease and desist that we have on file, which we'll learn more about as a council and community at our next meeting. Recruiting and filling department head vacancies, so that was also added in last year's budget because we did have, you know, a vacancy in the, in the Development Services Department. We filled that, and now we have a vacancy in the Finance Department, and so that's something that will continue to be worked on as well. Assessing recreation programs to meet community needs, this is something that has come up, you know, for years now. The city itself in the past has always been, you know, we want to provide recreation programs to our community, and we want to keep those costs low as, as we can to provide that service to the community. However, we have had some changes in the recreation program, when we had some people switch positions and/or retire, and so that institutional knowledge basically opened that up for reevaluation and trying to make improvements to rec programs, you know, which, which also opens up a whole reassessment of how things are going, which Jalen taken lead and myself have been working towards, and will hopefully have that to you in the, in the near future. Exploring areas of funding for the SSJD surface water connection, so this is also an item that was rolled over from the 202122 budget. It was the last council's goal, or the council before then, I'm not sure how far back it would go, person-wise, that this was something that was also brought forward as something we wanted to pursue, not only because the costs of it keep going up, but because the government, state of California is looking at, you know, additional sources of water, not just groundwater, the groundwater isn't as continuous as we'd like it to be, and so their surface water projects are ultimately what could be coming down in, in the future, and so getting ahead of that game, moving that project forward. We've been off and on in discussions with things like that for many, many years, and then it was these last few years where councils have said, we're going to move this forward. And so exploring those areas of funding, which is still something that's, that's moving forward, you know, whether it be in the form of grants or in the form of loans, those are things that we're still looking into, and also being a member of the ground surface, groundwater basin groups that we're in, they do provide additional resources that we've been able to look into, and so that is something that we're currently working on. And then last year was added was also to increase efforts to address code enforcement requests, and so that was added as well due to the increased volume of requests that we were receiving at that time. So those obviously were the ones that were proposed, because just about all of them are something that are still in process. However, that doesn't mean that they don't need their languages update, revisions, removal, anything that this council is interested in pursuing, whatever's listed on these goals, you know, are, are basically what staff with the city are going to take as, as prioritization on, on things that we should be looking at as we're moving forward, either in our budgets, in our processes, in future projects, those type of things. And so. When I think of Escalon and, and I look at the community and I talk to people in the town and work with residents in the council, things that, that come up a lot are maintaining our high quality of life, taking pride in our city, keeping the city family-oriented community, preserving our family atmosphere, managing the city's growth and keeping that small-town vibe, and then obviously, low crime rates, rates always come up. These are things that I continuously hear from people, things that everybody in this community that lives here wants and want to pursue, and so those are goals that I've seen our past councils utilize in, in their efforts to make new goals for the fiscal year budgets and goals for the community itself. And if there's additional goals that we want to add to that, that's definitely something that our council can, can strive for. But I think our, our main ones are small-town, managing our growth, being responsible, you know, and preserving family has been a big item. Family-oriented community that comes up over and over and over again is that, it gives that community feel, it keeps everybody here, it has people who are born and raised here staying here as, as long as they can. And so I wanted to point those things out, because they just come up repeatedly when you're, when you're dealing with members of the, of the community and talking about Escalon. So these are other goals that this council can consider that we've talked about. Most recently was adopting a strategic plan or a vision, and that's something as a council, you know, that will take a few workshops to provide staff with that direction and, and what you foresee in the future, whether it's five years out, 10 years out, 30 years out. We want to explore that, we want to know what that vision is from the community, foster that, that vision from the community in this council, have the city fall into place with that, and create some type of plan where we're following that, we're providing updates to council either on a bimonthly or quarterly basis, we're reviewing it annually, making updates, those types of things. The city hasn't had a strategic plan that I'm aware of in the past, and I do think it would be definitely a great tool to have and move forward. Something that our development manager also brought up was economic development plan and roadmap, which is also something that this council has expressed a lot of interest in. Jalen also brought up creating some type of corridor plan, and we list 120 because that's an asset for the city, right? We, we have an area where all these cars are coming through, we want to maximize that use, try to improve it as much as we can to have people stop in town, spend their money here, but also enjoy our atmosphere, you know, and, and visit, visit our businesses, Types of plans like these would address things, you know, regarding safety and access, land uses, taking those, those assets that we have as a city and putting them to use and trying to create success with those. Another option we've talked about doing too is some type of corridor plan with McHenry, although it's not as large as 120, but that's something that we can do as a sub to this plan if you wanted to in the future. Hogan Ennis Park expansion, you may recall back in 2016, past council created a master plan for Hogan Ennis Park, and it showed the expansion, which is currently what the 18 acres that we own by the golf course is basically designated for, future parkland development. And of course, that included a bunch of different amenities, additional parks and fields and, and things like that, and so that's included on here, because that's something that the city has, has designated that land for currently, created a, a plan or spec for it, a conceptual design, and have approved that, and so that's sitting there as an option to consider. Other things that have come up include our community pool, and we know where that's currently, you know, sitting, and we'll be getting more information on that in the future, but an item that comes up for discussion more frequently this last year, as well as the skate park, that's come up in the last few meetings. The skate park is also a park, a part of our Hogan Ennis Park expansion, and so moving those type of items forward. The school district has also reached out to us regarding school resource officer, that's something that they're looking to partner with the city with in the future, and as we move forward with reviewing our budget and getting our, our budget approved, those types of options and whether or not the city can assist in those type of things will be coming in the next few weeks and/or month. Another item that's been brought up as well is a sales tax measure for that November 2024 election. It's been brought up by the past council, it's also been brought up by this current council, items to consider, and then direction on moving forward on those. Most recently, we've also discussed residential sidewalks and upgraded crosswalks, those are things that have come up as well. Residential sidewalks being, I want to say maybe six months ago or so, the city was able to have some LTF or local transportation funds that would typically be used towards our transportation system, and we were approved by the San, San Joaquin Council of Governments to utilize that money for our roads, which also included sidewalks, and so I know there has been talk in taking those monies and trying to put them towards sidewalks. Past councils have been more, have been open to making certain sidewalk repairs and fixing sidewalks when it's, were related to commercial development, because they're submitting that development plan and, and they have landscaping in there, and that could have been what contributes to these lifted sidewalks, because most of the sidewalks that need replacement are usually due to these lifted trees or the tree roots that are growing up. Residential sidewalks is something that really hasn't, hasn't been given direction on. Our current municipal code talks about that being the property owner's responsibility, that has been recently amended by council to not, to be new development, not existing, not to trigger, trigger during existing development, which would be adding on to your home or, you know, create, creating another building or building another structure in your backyard, but new development would be responsible still for putting that sidewalk in. And then also upgraded crosswalks, that's come in specifically with the Caltrans roadwork on 120, but we've also had residents in the past talk about improving the crosswalks at McHenry and 120, as well as across from the community center to get across Escalon Road or Escalon Avenue. So those are additional goals to consider, where at least if they're added to the goals, it gives staff that direction that that's something that this council's looking for, and it keeps in our minds to look for funding sources related to those types of projects, draft up estimates, so we have a good idea of how much those things are going to cost, and maybe include those, you know, in the future in our future planning. So we're moving into our capital improvements projects. So our CIP is a planning program of current and future capital projects. So these typical projects include street reconstruction and overlays, water sewer and stormwater improvements, construction and/or renovation of city facilities, park developments and improvements, land acquisitions and city beautification projects. So these are our current capital improvements projects for streets. At a past meeting, it was asked for the staff to prioritize these projects in levels of importance, and I would say that some projects are slightly more important in terms of timeline and addressing, but for the most part, we're not putting any projects on here that, that aren't necessarily needed in some way, shape or form to keep the infrastructure, infrastructure's a big thing, that definitely prioritizes, you know, in a smaller city with limited resources, we're constantly trying to improve the infrastructure so that we don't have anything fail on us, and so that's a work in progress. But as far as projects being prioritized, we do our best to try to keep that prioritization in order, however, things that come into play that affect those are timelines, costs, revenues and expenditures, our needs and the community's needs, and so we do our best to, to work those out and, and work with council on those items when needed, and so we have our list of projects for streets listed here, and as indicated in our presentation a while back, we're looking at about $6 million in street projects.
Dominique, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I see that the slurry crack seal was kicked down the road a couple different times, how many of these other projects on this list have, have shown up in previous years and still need to be addressed?
You know that, Justin? The slurry seals.
Those are the ongoing ones, but as far as the, I don't think there's any on here that have gotten started, or that are, these are ones that will be in the process of getting started.
Justin, were these issues that would have came up like this year, past fiscal year 2223, those other items with the exception of the slurry crack seal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The first street improvements might also have been something that have been, has been around the past. This project, the city was actually awarded monies for these a really long time ago, and it was just a project that was not able to get off the ground, and so it was kind of put on the back burner, I want to say for maybe four or five years, and then when SJCOG contacted us and said, hey, you have this money slated for this project, it hasn't really moved forward, are you going to utilize it or not, is when we were as staff, oh, I didn't realize this project's here, here's that money, and we started moving that forward. And because it was in such close proximity to our Main Street Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project, we consolidated those and called them our Downtown Project, and we've held a couple workshops on that, you know, First Street connecting McHenry onto Main Street, and then Main Street Bike and Pedestrian Improvement going down Main, Main Street towards St. John Road.
It also has SJCOG money.
Yes, which also, that one was fully funded through a grant, correct? So these are our projects, also prioritized by need for sewer for this year. We have our trunk line rehabilitation phase two, this was a large project that the city did pull a loan on, and it had to be broke up in phases in order for the city to, to complete it, and so we are currently in phase two. We also have the lift, lift station improvements on Carrigan, and then our wastewater treatment plant engineering plans, which we have marked as two sets, because it's broken up industrial versus domestic, and that's also being funded through our ARPO's monies, as we've indicated in the past. Industrial pond sledge removals listed, and in some cases, you're going to see projects that are listed in capital improvements, even though they're maintenance or ongoing maintenance or annual maintenance, and that is probably due to the cost, and that's how it's been done in the past, and, and current staff is comfortable with continuing to do that, because it leaves that marker for us to know, hey, when we're having the sledge removed from the wastewater treatment plant, it's got a huge price tag on it every year, and we want to make sure that we have the money, and we're earmarking that every year, and the best way to be able to do that and know that it's coming every single year is to include it in that capital improvements plan, so it doesn't get missed, because something like that, $350,000 is a huge amount, and you're dealing with a wastewater treatment plant that needs that sludge to be removed in order to, to function, and so that's how our city in the past and staff has made sure that that stays on the marker to be addressed every year.
Ask a question.
Sure.
So there's two items on this particular list, where in the 21, like, so in particular, I'm looking at the McHenry trunk line rehabilitation project, phase two, so in the 2122 budget, there was a lot, this line item was $1,571,780, and now this year, it's gone up by a million dollars. Is that just with escalation, or is that further refinement of the project?
It's my understanding, it's, it's escalation of the cost to do that type of job, and so projects this large by phase, we're putting out to bid, and we're getting responses from, you know, competitive bidders on. Um, and we're getting responses from, uh, you know, competitive bidders on, on those costs. Um, and, and it's our understanding that the cost to do these types of projects has increased a lot, especially over the last two years. And it's continued to increase. Um, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
You're exactly right. It's exactly why the prices are.
Well, another one is the, the lift station improvements.
Yes.
So that was at ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, and now it's seven hundred and seventy five thousand.
Well, I think honestly too, originally it wasn't quite budgeted correctly, um, to be honest, with things that were found to be even more wrong with the listation at the time and parts we're not able to get. It became to be a brand new lift station in total instead of half of a listation, some trunk line.
Thank you, Justin.
No problem.
Thanks, Dominique.
No problem. So then we're moving into our water, um, capital improvement projects. And so these, these projects are also listed, um, prioritized. Um, well, number one, well, construction, which the city did, uh, pull a loan on as well to move forward. As you may recall, this loan is through the state of California, which took us over two years, um, to be approved for, which delayed the project, um, significantly. Um, and then we've also put that project out for bid twice now. The first time we didn't receive bids, um, the second time we received one bid. Um, and that's an item that will be coming to the council, um, if not the next meeting, the meeting of the eighteenth, um, to consider that, that bid. Um, along with these other projects that are listed here, and then SSJID, surface water projects been listed. Um, the amount for that hasn't been indicated there, obviously, because it, it keeps fluctuating. When we did the, um, the original report that was back in either two thousand nineteen or twenty twenty one, option C was listed at about seven million dollars. Um, and that has since increased. Um, we're looking at more like twelve million dollars. However, our engineer has been doing some value engineering and seeing what we can do to get that down. Um, and they did indicate that there were several items that were not included in that, um, seven million dollar budget um, that needed to be included to either make sure the project is, is done the way it needs to be done. And also things that were needed, um, that were required through the comment process with SSJID as we've moved forward with them. Um, and so this one, we know it is not going to be completed this year. And so it's, it's going to probably be listed in future planning as a number that's going to be popping up over the next few years. And while we're heading there with design, we're looking for funding opportunities. And at some point, if we're not able to find funding opportunities, it's, it's bringing options to council and getting direction from council on how we want to move forward with this project and if we want to move forward with this project. And then this item is, is more routine. Um, we do take, uh, storm water, um, at the wastewater treatment plant, and then it's transferred over to SSJID. And so we do do, we have some, uh, IT upgrades for those types of stations that we put into the, um, capital improvements projects because it's not annually, but it comes up every three to five years as things that we need to do to address that. And so future planning items. And so in past budgets, you're seeing probably at least three years out. Um, we tried our best, as you know, budgets are planning documents. And so we're doing our best to plan how we think everything's going to happen for that fiscal year. Um, obviously we come up on mid-year review where there's other items that were unforeseen that come to council that need to be reviewed. Um, and, and or items that we end up not being able to do or complete and making that determination on whether it needs to still happen and gets moved into the new budget or is removed out of the budget if it's no longer necessary. Um, a lot of times you'll see projects in process where we've done a portion of it, but we need to continue that remainder amount into the next year because it crosses that fiscal year because we're operating off a fiscal year and not a calendar year. And so that's just adjustment that needs to be reviewed every time we're modifying this document. Um, let's see. So in terms of projects being rolled over, um, I know that there has been some concern with projects being rolled over. Um, and for the most part, it appears in looking at past budgets that, that future planning items that continue to be rolled over are either items that internally, um, staff or past staff has looked at, at, it's not a hundred percent important, but it's something we want to keep on the radar in case any funding comes up that we're able to, to utilize in this function. Or it's, you know, heads up that we're going to need to be paying these things and this is when the project needs to be done. And that could be dependent on funding sources. Um, some of these funding sources that we receive have deadlines. You need to spend the money, um, you know, use it or lose it, spend it in a timeframe. And so we're planning that out to make sure in the absence of some staff, future staff sees this money's here. What do we, we need to spend it by this date? Um, and so it's, it's just basically establishing that, that pathway that everybody can follow in the absence that somebody's not here or, go ahead.
Uh, with, with that statement, the items that we saw previously, were those prioritized in the list that we saw? Were they just in random order that they?
For water?
Yeah, for just the, the past few slides that we've been looking at.
Yes, all of them have been prioritized.
So the list ranks them by priority?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Priority and, and, you know, if nothing happens, this is, this is how staff would see them being prioritized. Um, but like mentioned before, cost timelines. For us, it's the, the, the number items that are number one are like health and safety items, phase two with our sewer lines. Um, you know, we've moved forward with that because we, we need our sewer line replaced because in the event that that line isn't, isn't replacing, it bursts, we're going to have an issue. And so that's priority. Same thing with that well, um, you know, meeting state requirements on number of wells and having enough water and capacity, um, in the event, um, that we need that water. And we don't have an alternative source at this point in time. So we need to have that backup well there, um, in order to maintain our water supply. Um, go here. And so some items that you've seen in the past regarding future planning items is, uh, is for forecasting, placeholder, um, essentially putting it on the radar so it's not forgotten. Things that have been listed are senior housing because that's an item that was a goal of council, uh, pursuing senior housing. And so there's monies that has been, that have been, um, informally earmarked in a way to let you know, this is the money, this is the money that's there for this project in the event you want to utilize it there. Um, another project that's been listed as future planning items is a corporation yard. There's land acquisition and a new building. I'm not necessarily sure on the background of that, but it's not, it's not a bad thing to have. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to move forward with it anytime soon. But in the event money, grant monies come up for, you know, additional infrastructure or new buildings, it just depends on what's available. Knowing that that's on the radar is something, you know, is, is, is great. It's my understanding in the past that this backlot that we're, that we have vacant, um, was at one time being considered for a future corporation yard. I don't know if that, that ever stuck or if that was just discussion, but we did purchase it. And so making it a one, I, I don't, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to put all of our places together if it was able to work that way. But we're not there yet financially and we're not there yet. You guys are still able to utilize your building, so.
We are.
So it's not a priority, but still on the radar in case it's needed in the future. A lot of traffic signals are listed in, in future planning. This includes Brennan and one twenty. Um, I believe Alray was listed on there, McHenry and Alray. And we have a couple of other traffic projects that were listed. Um, those might actually be changed in the future, um, because I believe at that time, those projects were forecasted, um, for, for more growth than we currently have. And our growth hasn't changed much. And so those might be postponed out even further upon evaluation because we, we haven't met any of those numbers as originally predicted for growth. Um, and so, or it's not necessary, somehow put on the radar, not seem to be necessary at this point in time. Um, we've also listed some neighborhood, neighborhood park improvements, uh, which also include Hogan Innis Community Park, which was our master plan that we approved. And it, it talks about, um, soccer fields and softball fields and just all these improvements that would cost money to create these things. Um, and that's listed under Hogan Innis Park. And it's actually phased out with estimates that would need to be revised, obviously, because they're probably old. Um, but that all stems back from that master plan that we created. And so we adopted this and, and we also, um, you know, reviewed our development impact these for parks and recreation and included that park as something that we're moving forward as a city. So we're, we're collecting to see that happen. And so giving the, the community and the council an idea of how much these things are going to cost and putting them in future planning because that was the direction council wanted to go at that time, um, whereas currently in, because it hasn't been changed, um, to you, to move forward with. Um, and then we have a lot of, okay, just making sure. I thought I heard somebody talk. And then we have wastewater treatment plant grounds and ponds. And so for the wastewater treatment plant, obviously, because it's, deals with wastewater and is a large area, there's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of parts, a lot of pieces. And, and it's very expensive. And so it's another one of those items where it might not be happening annually. But when it does need to be replaced, it costs a lot of money and we need to know when those things need to be done. If, if it's replacing out aerators, um, dealing with special pumping, including sledge removal and sorts. We need to know those because they're so expensive that they could impact us at the time that they're broken and keeping them on schedule and knowing when they need to be replaced out. Um, or when they can be pushed to the next year because they're still in somewhat good condition. It just depends. But keeping that stuff documented in our future planning to make sure that we're staying on top of it um, and don't, and don't get ourselves in a hiccup, um, if they fail on us. So what are your projects and what are your goals? Does this council have additional goals they would like to add, um, to our current goals for the new fiscal year? Are there projects that are currently listed that you'd like to see revised and or removed? Um, are there, you know, it's, it's up to this council, whatever you guys would like to do. And it doesn't have to be something we do right now, but it's something I wanted to present to you because I didn't want, I don't want everybody to feel like they didn't have that opportunity. Um, and it is fair with a, with a majority new council to reevaluate and, and make changes if that's what this council seeks. And so any direction that you'd like to provide or discussion, let me know.
I want to throw one out there. I appreciate the, um, efforts in code enforcement. However, I believe we have much bigger fish to fry. And one of those items that I think we should really consider is, um, the goal that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Higgin brought up at the last meeting about really focusing on that strategic plan. Cause that will give us a north arrow where we're going as a city. It helps city staff. It helps city council. We're all working together for our constituents. So I would try to make that a really big priority.
And that was something that was given direction by council to move forward on. And so if that's something you'd like to list into your goals, just let me know and we'll add it into that list.
I, uh, just have a question. Um, just because I'm concerned, because in private conversation, I, I was under the impression that this was a go ahead with the sales tax measure for the twenty twenty four. Um, I was under the impression staff was working on that and that was already a go ahead. But if it's not, then we do need to have that conversation about having that sales tax measure on twenty twenty four.
So, so it's a, it's a, a go ahead from past councils that it's something that the past council was interested in looking into. I'm definitely under the impression that this council is interested in doing that. But if it's something you want listed, and we intend to move, to move that forward, but if it's something you want specifically listed in your goals as a priority, as a goal that you want documented as a part of this budget, we would recommend putting it in there so that we know.
To me, this is just one project or one thing that we're doing. We're not necessarily putting every single project that staff's working on, on our goals.
No, no, but that's a large one. Yeah, no, and, but that's, that's something that's considered, uh, pretty large in the aspect of, of time and process. It's going to take resources, same thing with strategic plan. It's, uh, it's going to take more than a few meetings. It's a whole process. And so specifically with the strategic plan, we talked about it at the last meeting. Um, you know, putting something together and focusing in on certain areas. And then at that point, making that determination, and this is council's determination on whether they want staff to continue to work on that or if they want to hire somebody from the outside to specifically look at an area. So the same thing would be said with the sales tax measure. Um, you know, we've obviously done it before. Um, it, it didn't, it didn't make it through that first time. And so it's improving at this time that if this is something that the council wants to move forward on, making sure that we're moving forward in the right direction, um, to, to ensure as much as we can that it would be, um, successful. And so things like that are keeping it on a general election. Um, you know, identifying, uh, whether it's a special or general sales tax. And then there's a whole process with that. And so, um, I think it's been discussed in the, in the past as well that usually, uh, cities, when they're, when they are pursuing something like that, they do hire an outside consultant to do phone calls and kind of get the community's idea. And so at that point, when we're getting there, we're, we're asking council options. What do you see? Half cent, full cent? What do you think? And then we take that third party, um, consultant and, and essentially have them make phone calls and reach out to people in the community to get that feedback and report back on what would be successful, um, so that this council knows how to move forward with that. Um, and so it's, it's a large piece that will take several meetings to, to basically compile. Um, because you're putting it on a ballot as well. We're consolidating it with the county. We're writing, um, attorney, was it pros and cons?
Impartial analysis.
Impartial analysis. And so it has several pieces that are a part of a process. Um, and meeting deadlines to make sure it makes it on that ballot. Um, and so.
So if that.
And I am under the impression that we are moving forward, but if it's something you want specifically in your goals, that's.
If it has to be on the goals to get done, then we put it on the goals. And that was my thing. I didn't realize it has to be on the goals to actually move forward and get it done for the twenty twenty four budget. But if that's what it needs to be, then I, you know, that'll be a discussion.
Councilmember Walker, are you, are you suggesting, so just so we have more clarity?
Sure.
Essentially, is that you're talking about for staff?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, like, in private conversations, I thought we had already moved forward on this, decided we were going to be outreaching to see, um, what we should do and all of that. And what I'm hearing from staff is that for that to happen, um, and be more clear, it needs to go on our goals specifically here for us to do that. And so if that's what we have to do, if that's the next step for us, then we need to have that conversation.
I definitely think anytime we're talking about a tax, I think it's very important to be clear about, you know, the hows and the whys and all that good stuff. Um, I guess that's my two cents on it. So I, I, I agree with you in the sense that we should make sure it's either in the goals or there's some meeting that shows clarity that we can, you know, actually discuss all the pros and cons that, um, our lawyers talking about, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and it's okay, you know, go ahead.
No, no.
I was just going to say, that's obviously a large policy discussion because it would require council to vote to put it on a ballot at some point. And that's usually done in probably July or so of, of the year before the next term election would be July of twenty four for, for us. Um, I forgot exactly. It's like a hundred and twenty days or something prior to the election. Um, so the point is that's a larger policy discussion. I know in fits and starts and offline discussions, you know, with less than, you know, just one or two at a time, there's been some interest in exploring it. I don't think there's been any vote to do it formally. Um, there's certainly an interest exploring any revenue, you know, me, any revenue increases that the city could do, including a tax revenue, but not necessarily limited to necessarily a sales tax. So I think what I'm hearing from council member Walker, and I think, you know, the council would be interested in adding to the list some kind of revenue, um, stream, adding a revenue stream of some sort to the council goal. And then it's up to staff to figure out, you know, what that looks like and potentially, you know, a, a sales tax for, for council potential, you know, to look at and potentially direct staff to do. But that conversation hasn't happened quite yet.
Whatever timeline, I'm just saying, whatever timeline we need for us to vote in July to get this on the ballot.
Yeah.
We need to get started and whatever that needs, whatever time staff needs to put that together or any research that needs to be done. I mean, to me, time is of the essence at this point. That's, you know, eight months, right? Nine months away. Um, and so whatever that needs to be done and those conversations, those votes have to happen. So, um, like I said, I don't know if that needs to be specific coun, council goal. But if it does, then if that's the next step, then we need to go ahead and talk about that and move forward as fast as we can.
I think up here, everybody's got the same idea that we want to make sure that moves forward with the analysis of what would possibly work or not work and if it's feasible or not. I'd be in favor of making sure that's a goal myself. And in looking at the other goals, there's a lot of things down there. There's a lot of money involved in there. I want to make sure that we focus on the goals where we have money committed through grants or other organizations like SJCOG. Their committed money, I know that in a lot of cases, they say use it or lose it, especially with SJCOG. I'm not interested in giving money back to the city of Stockton who would probably pick that, pick that money up if we don't do those projects. So I'm focused on wanting to make sure those kind of projects get done for our city. Cause we're not paying for them. We have county money that's involved and let's do that. As well as the other projects that are currently. money that's involved, and let's do that, as well as the other projects that are currently in one for another, in the works, and we've already committed a fair amount of resources to it. Wastewater, SSGID, those type of projects, to continue on those, so that we can continue to try and mitigate some of the costs, as it seems every year, construction goes up 30-plus percent, it seems. So my thoughts on the goals.
I'd second that. Pretty thorough.
I'll throw them, oh, read it, Andy, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Seeing as we're just seeing this really collectively put together for the first time, I don't know what direction we can really give on that, except for to ask for some time to review that, assess what our own personal goals are that are, that were presented, and prioritize them based on what this council's need seems to have. So my thought would be that we would need at least one meeting, if not two, to fully digest the items that were presented to us, and then come back with the opportunity to present our prioritization, as well as goals that were not included on that list. However, it was fairly thorough, and a lot of the items that we brought up that were added on there, so I do appreciate that. There were a lot of items that maybe weren't on there when it was presented, when previous goals were presented.
So are we thinking to go ahead and maybe come back with this item at the next meeting as a staff report? Or it's my understanding that we're looking at at least adding?
This wouldn't affect us in any way with the budget stuff, right?
No, no. I mean, this is just something that'll get rolled up into the budget. So once the budget's approved, your goals are going to go into that budget document. And so doing it at the next meeting?
I don't, my personal opinion, for what it's worth, is that I don't see any problem with councilmember Ingle having a little time to digest it, and anyone else in the council, for that matter, who might have an idea they haven't thought of.
Staff, could you email this to us?
Sure. So I'd like to contribute one more goal that I didn't see mentioned, but I know that we've talked privately about it.
Okay.
And that would be to continue to improve the communication between council staff and community. And that is in having some sort of system in updating and our website, at the very least, and make sure that those forms and documents are updated to be current, so that when you go and you try and access documents from our own city website, that they are the current ones. I've had trouble myself, and I know that other community members have had trouble themselves getting actual current numbers, and some of them are a couple years of outdated. So if we could continue to work on trying to have that clear communication and reevaluating when we have hiccups, I would appreciate that.
That being said, do we need to open this up to the community to speak as well? So at this point, anybody here in the chambers that would like to come up to the podium and speak to goals, they're more than welcome to.
Danny Fox, thank you again. Great job, staff, putting it together, all of the options for goals. As you get the copies of it through an email, take a look at the ones that came up, specifically economic development, how to capture 120 traffic, and the sales tax in 2024. Because those goals, as you total them up, it's a lot of money. And there's some other things that's been there that's been part of the goals that the money just can't get there. So for me, sitting here, the quickest way to look at how to generate some money would be to capture the 120 corridor. I recall four or five years ago, as on the council, we had a public meeting out at the community center, and that was quite frequent. Someone says, well, how, we need to capture the 120 traffic. I think everyone knows that that's what we need to do as a community. So I think it's a good ad hoc committee, get the businesses involved, Chamber of Commerce, and put that right up at one of the top of the list. How do we capture the 120 traffic? Particularly now that we're going into '23, '24, we're going to be short some money in the joint fund reserve next year, June 30, 2024. So that would be my suggestion and hope that those two potential sources of funding, that'd be right at the top. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. About a year ago, there was a presentation about improvement at our city park downtown to do handicap, and we were getting money from somewhere. And I never, we came to a meeting about that, and everybody was pumped up, and then I never heard anything about it anymore. It was some money grant that we were going to get, and they were going to put four feet or something through the park where you could go on with your handicap, something. It was something to do with the handicap.
So that is the Main Street Bike and Pedestrian Project. It includes a pathway through the park. And that's actually scheduled for construction in October.
Thanks.
No, thank you. We're scheduling it amongst the events going on, so that there's no hiccup there. We gotta, we gotta let everything happen there, and then we plan to have that done before the tree lighting.
Anybody else here in the audience? I don't see anybody here. How about anybody on the GoToMeeting or out on the internet here? If there's anybody still out there that would like to speak to this? Some creatures, doesn't sound like we got anybody, so we're going to go ahead and close it up. We have direction then, on what we need to do then?
So would you like the items that have been brought up?
I have one more project.
Go ahead.
I was looking at the street projects that were mentioned as well. And I just want to bring up that, you know, with the sidewalk, usually we do the sidewalk rehabilitations and commercial zones. And I would like to have a discussion, at the very least, about residential sidewalks, possibly in the block within Dent Elementary School on Dent Street, Brayton, Mitchell, and then Yosemite in front. If you ever see kids coming to and from school at Dent, most of them are walking out in the street, and those, and they have to walk on yards. That would be a part of our community that I would see benefit from sidewalk improvements for the safety of our community, and would love to have that conversation as well.
With the items that were presented tonight as goals, you want me to go ahead and move forward with them and add them into the draft for the next meeting for review?
I'm hoping that myself.
I am also.
Okay. So we'll bring this back at the next meeting, and feel free to reach out to staff if you have any questions or need any clarifications on anything.
All right. Next up, council communication and future agenda items, number nine, discussion and direction regarding city council communications and potential sunshine policies for the future. So is, Dominique?
Just pull this back up. Sorry, I'm a little slow on this. Okay, so this item is regarding, this was an item that was asked to be put on the agenda by Mayor Pro Tem Hagan and Councilmember Ingle. And so this item, both the city attorney and I worked on trying to provide it in terms of solution. How would this council like to move forward with future city council communications and sunshine policies or anything like that? And so if council would like to discuss those and provide direction to staff, whether it be a formal policy or something, just having that discussion so that we can put something together for council.
So I'll go ahead and start. By no means am I looking at this as, it just came, happened to come up with Sean's meeting or gathering he had over at the library. It's by no means an attack, but it is a, some areas of concern that have been, I've seen with that, that I think, you know, in this time in our country where we have a lot of division, we need to be looking at unity. And part of unity is having respect for all of us around us. And, you know, that's your neighbors, everyone around you, including transparency. And so that being said, I have two things I would like to address. One is, you know, when you have a meeting like that, and you invite, you know, state representatives, like your congressman and your state rep, and, you know, state senators and, you know, superintendent, it's respectful. It's not something you have to do, but it's respectful and it shows transparency not to, or to make sure that you tell the mayor and the city manager that you're going to have a meeting like that. When people come into, they're coming to your town, they should be aware of that. And I think that's very important. Now, whether anyone else on council knows or not is irrelevant. I think that's important. I also think that in the best interest of transparency for the community, that ideally you invite the community to such an event, because there's a lot of implications to the conversations that were brought to my attention that were had at that meeting in regards to AB 1482, which is state, talking about state rent control and that kind of thing. That's my understanding. The second issue I have is potentially something that could be more of a legal issue, and I want to avoid this in the future, so we don't potentially have a problem. And that is, you know, when you're having a meeting like that, I'm sorry, when you're having a meeting, a private meeting specifically with, what I'm, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, you had a private meeting with the, one of the owners of Harmony, Nick Hubaldi, when our city has already taken a formal position, sending a letter to HCD. When you do that, the city manager and the city lawyer should be present, because even if it's not, even if it's done with no ill intent, no one knows that. And it can potentially lead to problems with that company. So those are two things that I think I need clarity on, or at least, at very least, a process moving forward on. Thank you.
Yeah, please. I'd like to utilize my council communications. Last meeting, when I requested that this was added to the agenda, there were several items in question. And I'd like to express the findings that I've heard about over the last week. First was transparency and communication from our council members, specifically Councilman Strowman, stating that he was advised from the city manager not to talk about it, advised from the city attorney as well, and also expressed that if there was a problem with that, that it should be brought to the attorney. I find that to be false and a blatant lie, as addressed in an email sent by the city manager to the council on the 1st of August. I'd also like to express another lie that I heard during part of that conversation. That was that it was not a secret meeting, yet the beginning of that meeting started with, "This is not a secret meeting, but what stays in this, what's said in this room stays in this room," as said by Councilman Strowman to the audience. Another blatant lie that was given to fearmonger, to our senior citizens, was that a statement by Councilman Strowman stating, under planning commission, Harmony said, "If we add a deed restriction," or this was during the planning commission meeting, "that if we add a deed restriction to the property, they would sell the park, and they don't care where these people go," which drew a fairly extreme response from the residents and the elderly in our community, which, if you listen to the, I believe it was November 15th meeting, at 1:06, 1 hour 6 minutes and 36 seconds, 1 hour and 11 minutes, also at 1 hour and 28 minutes to 1 hour and 29 minutes, those items were addressed. And what was said was that they would just run it as a 106-unit property, or park, excuse me. Just a fearmongering lie to our residents, a blatant just disservice to our community. I'm appalled to hear that those items were said. And I believe there are members in our audience that could back that statement up if it was questioned. I'm disgusted. And while, just like a contentious item to bring in to council, I think it needs to be heard. And I'm glad that it's on record, and I'm glad that it's out there and recorded, so that anybody that wants to look back can question what I'm saying and do the research on their own to find the truth in that matter. I can't believe the amount of lies that came out of that, and it makes me pretty angry, so I should probably yield at this point. I think my point was made.
Councilman Walker, council communications, comment on this topic?
Are we on this, are we on nine, or are we on?
We're on nine.
Oh, which is council communications?
So we are, we're finished?
We're doing, we're doing, no, we're still doing. It's all the same.
It's all the same.
Number nine.
Nine out of nine, we're just looking for any direction, if council has direction.
What are we looking, what are we looking to do in the future? Is what we're kind of looking, future state here?
Yeah.
Not so much worrying about the past, in my opinion. We're looking at future. What are we looking to do?
I just wanted to make sure that, I added on top of that, that whatever Danny had mentioned earlier, if we could just give him a synopsis of what happened during that process, why we push things on after we're done with this. If it's part of my council communications, I just want to add that on to it.
Don't look into that for the next meeting to respond.
Because he had questions on why we push things back, and there's.
From the June 5th meeting?
There's, I think, some clear reasons for that that were important, so that's it. Sorry.
Councilman Strowman?
Oh.
Councilmember Walker?
Yeah.
Continue.
Before we come this way. No, it's fine. So, and, you know, I see the concern, I mean, with this, you know, the potential sunshine policy and all of that. I see the concern, but I also see that we already have the Brown Act that we are following. I do think it's unfortunate, you know, as I read this email that we did get on July 31st, it does seem as though we were being guided that it was okay to, it's okay to meet with constituents as long as there's under, and under two at one point. And, you know, unfortunately, that was what the message was. And I can see how people were informed, okay, and what they felt the information was coming at them. But we do have the Brown Act, we're following the Brown Act, and I think we're learning right now to be a little bit more open of what is going on. And like it says here, if there is three members present, someone is going to leave. And then that would be what we would do. Everyone would be informed that whatever is going on is going on, and we would be able to decide what was going, you know, leave at that point if there was something where more than two of us was present, like we do now, if we're all out in the community in some sort of situation. So moving on from that, I think we had a great discussion on the CIP. I think it's important that we get all on the same page of what our community is looking for and the directions that we're going towards. I hope that we continue to promote and encourage and appreciate our community citizens for serving the community and participating in the community and providing for their neighbors. And I think that that wasn't listed as one of those Escalon goals, but I think it's major of what Escalon is, is us taking care of each other as well. That doesn't have to be on an Escalon goal, but it is what Escalon is about. That doesn't have to be on an Escalon goal, but it is what Escalon is about, is just making sure that we're helping each other and looking out for our neighbors. And thank you guys for coming out tonight, and I think that's all I have for this evening.
Councilman Strowman?
Well, I, I want to address some of the concerns that were brought up. In particular, with Mayor Protem Higgin. So, I agree with you that if our assembly member or our state senator or congressman, et cetera, et cetera, we have a meeting with the constituents, advise them, and so, I agree, but given the confines of the Brown Act, I was not, I couldn't violate the Brown Act. So the minute that I advised Mayor Bellinger of this, because I already had conversations with Councilor Walker, I have violated the Brown Act. And so, Mr. Mayor, I hope you're not offended, but I was not willing to violate the Brown Act.
No, no problem.
I would like to clarify a statement that I made at the last meeting. It was not a lie, but I would like to clarify that I was advised by staff and the city attorney that if I made the council aware that this would constitute a public meeting under the terms of the Brown Act. I was then stuck between a rock and a hard place, because I wanted to let the entire body know, but as we just mentioned, then it becomes a public meeting. And we, as a group who formed the, or who put the meeting together, the biggest concern that we heard from some of the meeting attendees is that they were living in fear out of their, out of fear of retaliation, and they requested specifically that we protect their anonymity and confidentiality, out of fear. And, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm sure you know some of these fears that these residents live with. Councilman Engel, in the June fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting, you mentioned that you're sick, you were sick and tired of the quote unquote dog and pony shows, and that you implied that if we want community input to talk about the budget, that we needed to take the time to seek this out. Specifically, and I quote, "If the two council members to my right want to get the input from their constituents, I say they put their money where their mouth is and have a committee with their constituents." My question is.
That's inaccurate.
My question is, how is the meeting any different? We had a small committee that put this meeting together, and yes, we put our money where our mouth was. I believe that as a council, we have much bigger issues that we must address immediately. For example, the budget, goals, infrastructure projects, I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. I specifically addressed at the meeting that that meeting was not city business, and I made that very clear at the beginning of the meeting by stating that what was discussed in that meeting was not the views or the opinions of the council or of the city staff, and that I was simply speaking as myself. Rent control within the city of Escalon was not discussed at this meeting. And as far as the other items discussed in this meeting, I'm choosing not to get into the specifics for what was discussed as per what I agreed to in that meeting. Yes, I am choosing to keep those residents' anonymity intact, because that's what I said I was going to do at the meeting. And I invite any member of the public, if you have a question or you have a concern, please contact me. I'm here to help. I'm not here to lie, I'm here to work with all of you. Some of you voted for me to be in this position, and if we work together, we all benefit. I have nothing further for council communications.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a short response?
Real quick.
Just real quick.
Real quick.
Just because it's pertinent. So, you, you could, Sean, I get what you're saying, I do, I'm a council member, Sean, sorry. But you, you could have, if you wanted to make that public, you could have. You had seventy-two hours according to Brown Act, if you wanted to invite the public, you could have, which would have made us be able to be there. That's, that's the reality of the Brown Act. You didn't tell the city manager, which you could have said.
I disagree, I did.
Not in the timeline I heard. First, first thing I heard was that she was finding out from other people you're having this meeting and actually contacting you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I explained to the city manager and to the city attorney that we were having this meeting.
Well, I think I'd like to get consensus, consensus on direction moving forward if I can, after Mr. Mayor has his words.
I, I have just a simple question before I get into any concerns of meetings and whatnot. We all obviously have meetings out in the public, in the grocery store, with a ballgame in one form or another, school function, so we have to be careful with, if we're going to do a policy, what constitutes a meeting? Is there a number of people? Is it a topic that comes to the council? So, my only question, I'm not asking for details, Councilman Strowman, I just want to know, the, the purpose of the meeting and/or outcome of said meeting, was it ever going to come to city staff or council for consideration or action?
No.
Okay. I think that might help clarify a little bit of concern. If it was never going to come here, for me, I'm not as worried about whether or not I knew about a meeting, if it was never going to come to my dais here for consideration for me. I'm seeking for myself only. If nothing from meetings is going to come to us for consideration, personally, I'm not concerned with any meeting that any of us have out in the public. If it's going to come here, then I have a significant problem with having meetings outside of public notice and whatnot, so we're all aware, for me. But if it's a meeting that any of us have that's not going to move a needle on any action item in the future for us, I'm not going to worry about it.
Mr. Mayor, I see it as a legal issue. I see what I, what my concern and why I brought it up is two, two positions, is one, the first position is a respect for the people in those chairs over there, our city staff, as well as yourself and the public. Two, and that's not a legal thing, the legal issue I have, potentially that comes up, is when you're having a private meeting with a company that we've already taken a city position with sending a letter to HCD, and you're having a private meeting with that owner of that business, that potentially puts a legal quagmire in play. It does.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
That's the concern I have.
I understand your concern, I truly do. However, Mr. Hubaldi emailed five city council members, according to Mr. Hubaldi, and I received the email, and I immediately forwarded the email to the city manager and to the city attorney, and I said, "What should I do?" And I took city attorney and city managers under advisement and said, "It's your choice if you want to meet with him or not." So I wanted to listen to him, and when I met with him, he said to me, "You know, I emailed all five city council members, and you're the only one that took me up on that offer." Is that my fault?
Well, I see it as a, because we've taken a position, because we've taken a position legally against that company, it, to me, it puts us in a weird position as a, as a council, and I think that we need to have direction on that in the future, because the city manager, in my opinion, the city manager and the city lawyer should be present at that meeting.
And I can totally respect that. I mean, if, but if I'm reaching out for advice to the city manager and city attorney, I would hope that they at least say, "You know, hey, we sent that letter to HCD, you might not want to attend that meeting." I, I swear, maybe it's my naivety, but by meeting with him, I didn't believe that I was putting myself or this council at risk. If I was putting this council at risk, I would have said, "Thanks, but no thanks." I, I would not want to put the rest, the four of you and staff at risk legally.
I'm, I'm not going to get tiki-tacky with it, but I would like to have a direction moving forward to prevent this kind of issue in the future, so it doesn't affect our ability to meet with private citizens, but at the same time, you know, if we are in a legal situation, potentially with another, with a company, we need to have you guys present. Otherwise, who knows what was said, they could say something, they could say that Councilman Sean said something. We can't prove it.
Yeah.
Like, we can't.
May I just chime in here?
Please.
So I've heard some, I've heard a few different things, I just want to clarify some, some legal points and parameters. Number one is an elected official, it, it would be some version of chilling, the residents' ability to proposition and seek redress through their elected officials, if there was a rule that said, "Hey, any particular council member cannot meet with certain people or certain businesses or certain constituents," if, if the council has, has discussed something before. And so, if a council member generally wants to meet with any constituent, they're free to do so for the benefit of the public who's elected them into their office and has the right to seek redress. That's just a general principle, and I think that's something that all five of you probably can agree with. That being said, there are some topics or issues that this council, I just want to, I want to say both of these things to make it clear what the potential issue is. That being said, the council itself as a body can adopt, give direction or adopt a, you know, what we call a sunshine policy that says, "Hey, on certain topics that the council deems to be of extra importance or sensitivity," let's call it, sensitivity, such as this one that we're discussing right now, the council could elect to basically nominate those topics as subject to higher level sensitivity, and therefore, if a council member is going to discuss or reach out or make any inroads or conversations with those constituents, some kind of policy that would either require city manager attendance, staff attendance, or a report back to the whole council after that, because that balances the tension of wanting the constituents to be able to reach out to their elected officials at any time, doesn't chill that, doesn't prevent that or block that at the same time, and make sure that certain protective measures are in place, either disclosure to the whole body at a council meeting, or at least having a staff there to assist. You know, that would be one thing that the council could explore, that would hopefully thread that needle.
I, I personally would like one of you, you there, whether it's with me, Sean, I'm sorry, Councilman Sean, Councilman Engel, with complete transparency, we can, you know, you can't eliminate every shady act that can happen, not that something did happen, but it can happen in those situations.
I think something good, Mayor Bellinger, may I have a thirty-second response to address your concern?
I would like to go with that. I think that's a good idea.
All right, sorry, Andy. What you asked for, Mayor Bellinger, was that if any city resources or anything were to be utilized, essentially is the way I heard the question, and, and yes, the representatives outside of this city that attended that meeting did, did give direction at that meeting that if we wanted to seek any information on AB fourteen eighty-two, that, quote, "Should get with our people or get with our city, get with staff," this was mentioned multiple times. And just to clear one thing up, if I can finish my thirty seconds, my issue is not with anybody meeting with anybody in this town to improve our community, my issue is flat-out lies that's being spread to our most sensitive in our community, the people that we should be looking after the most, and we're fear mongering to them and lying to them to promote our own personal agendas. That's the concern that I have, not meeting with people. Thank you.
This is council communication, I'd like to ask city attorney on that.
Can I say one more thing real quick?
Yeah.
Frank, I, I do like what you're saying, I mean, I personally think that that, I mean, sorry, our, our city lawyer, Frank, sorry.
I know who you meant.
Sorry, I'm, I do like what you're saying, because at the end of the day, I'm not trying to attack the situation, what I'm trying to do is make sure moving forward, we don't have, you know, issues that can be a problem. We're, we're in a time right now in our country where there's a lot of division, and the last thing we need is misinformation, disinformation, you know, this happened, that happened, to create further division in our town. And so, these kind of things, albeit naive potentially, or, or whatever they are, pose a potential threat to that. And so I think, my opinion is that we need to have some form of clarity when we have a position already taken as a council. That's my position on it.
And, and I, what I would say is, if that's the council's wish, it can do so, it could always ask more of its colleagues to do, you know, A, B, or C if it wants. But I, just from a policy perspective, and as someone that would draft a policy to this effect, you'd want it to be concrete and objective enough, so our city manager or city staff is not put in a position where now they're picking wins and losers among the council, in, in the sense of, "Well, it's because it's coming from this side of the dais or that side of the dais, I'll pick which when the policy applies."
Understood.
Because some of these things, you know, could be a little bit subjective, right? What is gray enough, what's sensitive enough, what's important enough? So what I would say is, if there is going to be a policy that a consensus or majority of the council would like, look to along those lines on a go-forward basis, that the policy would require the council to actually nominate when it's dealing with items that this is subject to that policy, so it's very clear to staff, not at the abstract level, but in the actual, like, this item we're discussing going forward, you know, that, whatever that policy would be, it just would be part of that.
I would like it to be very clear, if we have a legal position against a company, that the city manager and the city lawyer are present at that conversation, the next conversation with that private entity, whatever it is, because who knows what happens in that conversation? That's why I'm concerned. And it can, like I said, it can be a very simple conversation, trying to do something genuinely nice, or it can be something that is completely out of line, but we would never know that if someone's not present. Because if I come, say I did something, and I come and I just report on what I, the conversation I had, I can make up anything I wanted to.
Right.
I, I want to have two people there to verify that, that's my feeling, and I hope that the council would see it that way as well.
And if, if you don't mind, I'll just drill down a little bit more. If, if the idea is, anytime the council takes a legal position, and I'm just quoting you back, against a company, that could be, still be almost boundless in what that means, because if we impose, for example, a condition on McDonald's like we did, the planning commission did, or the city council could have done a few months ago by restricting the hours, for example, that's just one condition on otherwise fully, full pass, full grant of a CUP, would that be considered a legal position against a company? It could be. And then, and then Dominique may be in a position where now she doesn't know, does that, does that policy apply to the fact that we were put, imposed a condition that McDonald's didn't like on, you know, the project? So I guess what I'm saying is, I think it would require the council to expressly state out loud at a meeting that policy X applies to this issue specifically. So like, in this situation, what would have happened was, if there was a. happened was, if there was a policy like that at the time, you know, after discussing Almond Grove and stuff, I, you know, I proposed that the council policy X applies to the issue with any discussions with business, businesses, uh, you know, or with, with Almond Grove, the Almond Grove business, or the company, or whatever, the property owner, it, it'd have to be that specific is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. As, as our city lawyer, I would obviously yield to what you think, because, uh, that's what you do for a living.
Yeah.
I just want there to be more clarity in these kind of situations. That's all.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor Protem. And like I said, maybe it's me being naive, but if there was even a remote chance, that's why we have a city attorney, that's why we have a city manager, and that's why I sought out legal, uh, legal advice before even replying. And so Frank, I'm, I'm asking you, and Dominique, I'm asking you. I can't speak for the other four, but if there are those situations and we reach out to you and ask for advice, we're counting on you to give us solid advice and say, "Well, just a word of caution." I mean, obviously, we-
Well, I'll just, I'll just say I've never not given you solid advice.
I, I agree, but I, I'm just-
And what I've always said is, and I've just said it to this whole council right now, any member has the right to reach out to any constituents over any issue. I think that's something all five would agree. Now, you can't, the Brown Act's very clear, you cannot discuss, deliberate, or take any action amongst a quorum of you that hasn't been agendized. So what I also say is, you can't discuss, deliberate, or take action as it relates to Almond Grove outside of a meeting, uh, if there, if it hasn't been posted, that involves a quorum, so three or more. Now, I've never said one council member can't communicate. I mean, there's a difference between communicating the logistics or the happening of a meeting versus discussing the merits of the discussion of that would take place at the meeting. Um, the Brown Act's very clear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item. Um, you know, if Dominique were to present, "Hey, there's a meeting at the, 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 whatever," uh, if that were a word, were to get out amongst the council that so-and-so is having a meeting with such and such constituents, I wouldn't consider that a Brown Act violation, because it's just the happening of event. There's no, as long as there's no discussion about what's being said, or what's going to be discussed, or any particular council member's views on the merits of the discussion, yeah, that would cross the line. But just the fact, the existence of, of, of a meeting with certain people within the community, I mean, that probably happens all the time, I'd imagine, in a small community where, you know, council members know that so-and-so may be meeting with people, as long as they don't know what the discussion's about, uh, or they don't know what, what the council member thinks, or what the council member's saying, that sort of thing, it's not necessarily a Brown Act violation. So these things can be complicated, but I'm just trying to clarify where the, you know, the parameters are.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that I think that Sean did something malicious. What I'm saying is, the concern I have is that that is a position, that is a situation that can be taken advantage of potentially, and I don't want to see that happen. So moving forward, I'd like, my opinion is, I, it has nothing to do with private conversations, the private meeting they had is their private meeting. I was looking at that from the standpoint of, I think it's disrespectful, that's different. What I'm talking about this is more of a potential legal issue for us, when we have a clear, defined legal stance against, a legal stance against, uh, a, a company, that's not your McDonald's thing. I'm talking about, you know, it's much more significant than that. And so to prevent that in the future from being a concern that whether it's me or someone else that does it accidentally or on purpose, it doesn't matter, that we don't end up having a situation that leads to, um, a very negative consequence for our town, that's all. And so, so if there's some way we can legally word that in a way that allows us to still have very open communication with our community, that's what I'm looking for. And I, you're, you're the expert on it, so, uh, and, and obviously you need consensus for that to happen. So if there is consensus, I would love to see what you can dig up on it. If not, then I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I understand this is county, council communications, but these folks have sat here now for two hours and twenty minutes, and I feel we should give them the benefit of the doubt to speak up.
Are we allowed to do that on this side?
Yeah, it's, it, the, the way it's been agendized, it discusses possible direction and potential policies, so-
Okay, I just want to make sure we're following the rules there.
That's, that's appropriate.
Okay. At this point, Mr. Fox, you got a question or a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you. Um, you, Councilman Engel, you, you basically admitted it on the June 5th meeting. You went back and forth, back and forth about council members meeting with their constituents. Uh, based upon the dynamics of the council, I doubt very seriously, had it been he reached out to either yourself or the other two or three to make it a quorum, probably would have got shined on. That's my own personal opinion. That's my personal opinion. Lot of information that went on there from those, uh, elected officials, kind of cleared the matters of what they could do, and it basically came down to what we could do as a community. Several people spoke out about what we could do as a community to help the citizens, the seniors at Almond Grove, because it'll take over eighteen months or a year to even get anything switched or changed around on, on that policy or that state law that you, uh, referred to. Another thing that shocked me out of the meeting is that I think that, uh, I recall when some of the, uh, residents of Almond Grove came here to speak about the rate, their rates being raised, yeah, they, they were a little bit scared. Something over there is happening that's putting some fear into some elderly people. What was really shocking to me that someone's, has talked to residents there that they feel they've been switched and bait. They come in one day, say, "This is the program we're going to do, here, here's your contract," and they come back several days later, walk into these senior people, they sign the thing, and it's not even, anything at all like it was the first time. And that was the first time I'd heard it. You ever hear of it? You ever heard of that scam, switch and bait, the seniors? I don't know if it's true or not. I don't know if any, anyone's ever called, have law enforcement to go out there. So in the meeting, it was suggested that we, 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 we handled the situation here from every angle. And I suggested, yes, we should get law enforcement involved to take care of the people, the seniors, they're getting intimidated, scared, and I guess they're getting bait and switched.
Can I answer his question?
Well, I think, I, I think that we can look at it from the, they help the seniors out as a whole community.
You got an answer, yeah.
Yeah, again. Hey, uh, Mr. Fox, Mr. Fox, can I, can I answer your question for you real quick?
Answer it or ask?
No, answer it. Uh, I think, at least I think I'm answering it. Um, the, the, the seniors over there are completely covered by A B fourteen eighty-two. They are, legally. I've looked into it myself. So that's not necessary from that standpoint to try to find some loophole, because loophole's already there. I mean, the, the lack of loopholes already there. The second issue, uh, is, yeah, they are getting, um, you know, attacked, you know, in ways that I think are legally, you know, very legally snaky, and there's only a couple of ways you deal with that kind of stuff. One of them obviously is legal. Uh, the other is, um, you know, rolling over, I guess, and letting it happen, or you're moving. And none of us want to see this happen. So, you know, I think it's something that, hopefully, I don't know how the police could play into that, um, but it is something to, to, to think about.
Absolutely. If we care about the seniors at Almond Grove.
Hundred percent.
And we can do a lot of things, but if they're getting intimidated, and their rent's jacked up, and they're, 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 they're getting, uh, they're getting, what do you call it?
Yeah.
Bait and switch.
Yeah.
And they're not there enough with it, take it. I mean, the seniors get scammed every day. So, yeah, I think we can do a, a whole, everybody, take care of the seniors.
Councilman Engel, fear and whatever does not come from this council. It comes from landlords and owners, because they can pull the rug out from under us for whatever reason they so choose. I am a resident of Almond Grove. I am not ready to walk away from my investment there, though the park has gone to hell. Now, I don't know what kind of HCD you've reached out, what that concept is or anything, but at this meeting, it was not just Almond Grove tenants. There were members from the public there. There were members who are seniors and not seniors, but are concerned about seniors of this community. I just officially became a senior, to be honest with you. And I am appalled myself, and I am embarrassed of our city council right now. There seems to be a lot of bickering. There seems to be a lot of division going on, and you know what? We elected you into this position. And I am furious that you will take one or two council members, rake them over the coals, and think nothing of it, absolutely nothing of it. Now, you're probably going to bring up the incident at the meeting that I had words with one of the young ladies at Escalon Strong, and I did, because it was based on gossip. Her and I have actually spoken and worked that out, and she understands my feelings of Escalon Strong. I know you have ties to that. I think Escalon ties is, Escalon Strong is a great entity and can do a lot for us. I cannot believe that you cannot understand the fear that we do have of the retaliation from, and I'll dare to say it, but I'll dare say, Harmony. Their slum lords, our park has gone downhill drastically, we have dead landscape, we have buildings falling down, we have people that don't care about anything, and the only people right now are individuals like Councilman Strowman that will come and try to help us, try to help us, bring in resources to us. It wasn't a hush-hush meeting, you know, but the quibbling that's going on in this council is just amazing. And why can't you people understand and get along? It's like north and south just fighting again. You guys need to figure it out, and you need to get it together, because on the next election, y'all won't be here. You won't be here. I think there's other issues that need to be addressed. We need to get a balanced budget in this town. We need to talk to them about our police department. There's so many issues, our infrastructure, our water plant, our whatever. We need a stoplight at Almond Grove. We can't even get that to happen. Put that on your agenda. But the bickering's got to stop, and you got to start and think about us and not each other. Thank you.
I didn't know if I was going to come up and say anything, because I work with seniors every single day. I hear what happens to them every single day, and many of them are financially abused, abused with their homes and everything else. The attack on each other is uncalled for. I am very angry about the attacks that have happened with the city council. I get very emotional about it. There are many times when I go home and I don't sleep at night, because I'm sitting there worried about my patients, and not just my patients, but the patients, the seniors that are here in Escalon and what's happening to them, and not just in this town, but across the state. You made some accusations. Stro Engel, you also had accusations that were brought up before you were ever elected, and they were unfounded. You guys need to learn to talk to each other. I don't understand why this Brown Act is up. I don't like it necessarily, especially when it comes to this situation. You guys need to learn to communicate and come together as a united front if you really want to be successful with these seniors. What happened at that meeting two weeks ago could really affect these seniors even more just by doing what you did. Strohagen, I did look up the HCD and all that other stuff. Guess what? I talked to Ann. I was looking into the wrong thing. I was asking the wrong questions to the wrong people. You need to be careful on that. Maybe you guys need to sit down and talk to Ann, and talk to Sean, and whoever else is involved with the seniors, get a better idea of what's going on, and try to come together as unity, so that we can better serve the seniors here in Escalon, and maybe they can sleep better, and I can sleep better. Thank you.
Evening again. Sherri Hill. I am involved with the seniors out at Almond Grove. I'm involved with quite a few of them on a regular basis. Um, a couple of things. I don't see, I, I, I think maybe, maybe some of you are seeing some of what's going on up here a little bit differently than how I'm seeing it. I didn't see a personal attack. I, it may feel that way, especially when we're the ones being spoken to, like we were then.
Right.
I didn't take it personally.
Ma'am, just a reminder to address the body.
I didn't take it, well, she brought up the meeting and there was-
No, no, I know, it's fine. Just communicate with council, that's all, thank you.
So, um, it's easy to take it personal, I get that. But there are some corrections that need to be made. For example, when Mr. Engel was bringing up the June, he was talking about an ad hoc. That's totally different than constituent meetings, so that's a little bit, it's, it's, it's still a little different. But when we were talking about budget, it was ad hoc. It was, it was different with constituents. So, um, when we come out to, it's already been said, Almond Grove and Harmony, um, is there fear out there? Heck yeah, there's fear out there. Um, but again, I would twist some of the things that have been said, that, "Why haven't you come to me? I've been out there for months, months, months." I would have told you that they were afraid. I would have told you not to speak to Harmony. I would have told you that was a dumb move, because the very next day Harmony was out there taking videos, and since then, three of our residents have been given eviction notices, and three of them are being harassed. Um, dealing with Harmony is a dumb move. In this particular case, what, what Protem Mayor Hagan is saying is correct, that in this particular instance, it's wise not to speak one-on-one with Harmony or somebody in Harmony. You need to really have a lawyer there. This is totally different than McDonald's. This is totally, this is a, a deep, deep issue, and Mayor, it is going to come back to you. This, this whole thing, it's Almond Grove, it's our community, it's our seniors. Um, I was present at the meeting, and many of the seniors were very upset that they didn't realize that some of this meeting, a lot that was coming down, you know, with the, the bills that are coming down, that these are years out. They want something right now. So when our, you know, the assemblymen's, the senators, the county supervisors are there, they're talking that, you know, something's going to happen two, three years from now, and yes, we do need to have something that happens within our city, but these, these residents need something now. So the meeting, unfortunately, it was great, don't get me wrong, um, it doesn't help them now. And there is, uh, a lot of things going on out there that are, that are very shady, and, um, so I would just ask that you really think before we do these things. It is going to affect the city, Mayor. It is. It, it, it definitely is going to affect the city, and it is going to come back before you again and again and again.
I'm actually the community liaison for Escalon Strong. For the past year, I have been the boots on the ground out there with my fellow Escalon Strong. Strong. I have been the one in touch with the state stopping the evictions. I have been the one in touch with Congressman Harder, and a variety of other agencies, including the lawyers down in Fresno, trying to figure out how we're going to deal with this when it hits our city, and it will. It's going to land right in your laps. My issue with the meeting wasn't the meeting. That was fine. My issue was, it's landing in your laps, and you weren't part of it. The only way we can deal with this is going to be the community, because what they did in Fresno, what they've done across California, is going to rip this town apart, because that's how Harmony Grove works. Nick Ubaldi isn't just an employee of Harmony Grove, he is a partner, a full financial partner of what they're doing across the state to seniors. See, and I brought this up at the meeting, because apparently, people love borrowing my homework, but they don't do the work themselves. It is a business investment. They started on Skid Row-type mobile home parks ten, fifteen years ago. They come in, they rehab them, they take them over from the county. The one in San Rafael was actually because the lady who owned it died, and it went into probate. Homeless moved in, all sorts of horrible things happened. So, they had to take over the park. Harmony, Inc. has positioned itself to take these over from different counties across California. And then, when they move in, they simply buy them out under LLCs, shell corporations. And then, they start moving them out. Now, the cities that have done this before with them don't mind when, you know, what they consider Skid Row inhabitants being moved out, right? The druggies, the criminals, et cetera. Works for them. Takes that out of their hands, for the moment. But if you build, no matter how pretty, a mobile home park in Skid Row, you're never going to get a very good price, right? Because you step outside, it's still Skid Row. They have figured out that they can come into bedroom communities like Escalon, take over the senior ones, or any other mobile home park eventually. But Almond Grove is prime territory. They come in, and they push the seniors out. That's state regulations. They fall below a certain amount of seniors, they redesignate the park. Now, they can rent it to families. Now, they're paying fifteen, two thousand dollars for their space. That's all Harmony Grove, or Harmony, Inc. cares about. Meeting with Nick Ubaldi, so to end up having, the very next day you met with him, you put us on their radar. Escalon Strong's been trying to fly under the radar to get our funding in place to protect them. Very next day, property manager was out there videotaping any mobile home park, any mobile home unit, sorry, that can possibly set up on a code violation. And guess who gets to pick up the tab on that? That would be Escalon Strong. Guess who's the boots on the ground? That would be Escalon Strong. Those are the business people in our community who have stepped up to help protect our seniors. We were trying to fly below the radar long enough to get our ducks in a row, and Harmony has just called us on it, because you took them out there. I'm sorry, I'm not illegal, I'm a victim advocate, yes. I understand, even I understand the difference between who you meet with and who you don't, and under what circumstances. You put a target on our back. Yeah, I'm pissed, and I'm especially pissed because we were trying, you called a great meeting, I don't have a problem with the meeting. I have a problem that our entire community was not represented, because you're going to be taking on that fight. Yeah, sure, everybody's up for election at some point, and you're going to have to deal with that fight. You're going to have to decide what you can and can't do with the seniors, and it would have been nice to have all of you present to discuss that. Could have called the town hall. The meeting, was it private? No, it was announced at the Fun Bunch the week before, actually about a week and a half before. It was, it was told to us at the Starbucks thing a week prior to the meeting. The seniors came and asked us, our meeting?
Five minutes.
So, yes, I know what it might sound like, but Engel has every right to be angry, to be left out of what's going to hit us in our laps, every single person in this town who cares about those seniors out there. And considering we're the ones that are boots on the ground for the past year, that's us.
Anybody else here or on the go-to meeting that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing done, our next item is adjournment. We are going to be going into closed session. Thank you all for coming tonight, and we will see you at the next meeting. Thank you.